Good evening, Winthrop, and welcome to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of November 9th, 2021. Meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room at Town Hall. There's also a webinar number for people to join us on the web, on Zoom. The number to call in for that is 312-626-6799. And the ID number for this webinar is 865-603-18793. Okay, so join us on Zoom for the meeting. I would now like to have a roll call.
Councilor Jarrow. Council Plakat?
Here.
Council DeMarco?
Here.
Consulaterry?
Yeah.
Council Honan? Council Farino?
Yeah.
Council Vice President Christopher?
Yeah.
President Boncorry?
Here. There being a quorum, I call this meeting to order. Councilor Jarrow, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please remain standing for a moment? We have a unfortunate loss to a person that was really helpful in this town. In fact, I had just appointed him to the Tree Committee at the last meeting. And unfortunately, he was killed in a motorcycle accident with a state trooper that was, I guess, under the weather and has been charged with vehicle homicide on that death. And we lost another great person. And on that moment of silence, I'm giving the floor to Frank Constantino, who wanted to say a few words about Christopher.
Okay. Thank you very much, Council Boncorry and Town Council for allowing me to do this. I was invited by Consular Honan, Tracy Honan, to put together a few words. I'd like to recall some of the things that I had found out about Chris Zeig. A sudden notice about Chris Zeig at midday last Friday was the most horrific and shocking news to read on Facebook in my not wanting to believe it. Then I read and watched the news feeds about this tragedy, which happened at 1:30 a.m. on Friday, October 29, 2021. And I felt the impact and loss of such a very good man way too soon. Reports were that a young drunken state police person candidate had too much celebration drink, was driving too fast on a night road, giving more attention to his girlfriend than the dicey Southeast Expressway before crashing his large vehicle, which he left sideways on the road, causing Chris to crash his cycle into it. Later, this lax driver clearly accepted himself in the rules of the road that might otherwise warrant his fat ticketing, anybody else doing what he was doing. And on the latest radio report, this unsafe driver claimed his innocence. Chris was innocently riding to his night shift job at IKEA. I first met Chris about three years ago at a councilor candidate's reception at Julia Wallace's place and when Chris was seeking a council seat. And I remember his quiet reserve and steady presence. We had spoken briefly then at that time before COVID, put a lid on everything. We had later talked later on an occasional interaction at Zoom council meetings or a chance meeting at the center. Over the last year and a half, I came to know Chris better. And I'm sure a number of our Winthrop Loves Trees and Beautification members did. When he made his interest in many internet posts about the town's tree issues as utmost concern, he quickly became an avid voice for all things trees, posting photos, providing links, making many meetings with friends, residents, and town officials, and providing informed direction. During recent events at the Winthrop Cultural Center and had a recent Winthrop Loves Trees meeting and other meetings with Joanne Hillman and Hugh Madison for some new landscape at the Landing Green and our Crossing Cads near Town Hall, Chris always had some keen insights and opinions about what he saw happening with town trees, which ones were earmarked for removal, which should not be removed. And he was not hesitant to make his opinions advocating for trees very strongly known to officials. On his own initiative, Chris had also compiled many files or researched all manner of information from other towns for tree types and planting programs, resolutions, and innovative ideas. We'd also discussed how to record the location of all our town trees on a drawing, transferred onto a large zoning map, maybe using Google Maps satellite images to start. Also, after some firm exchanges at a recent town tree committee meeting, Chris first learned about an open position on this committee where he felt he would be most effective in representing the growing resident initiative for more tree plantings in town. Only a couple of weeks later, though, Chris was quite elated when his deserved committee appointment was made official, as Mr. Boncorry has just stated. At a recent summer-ending Arbor Garden Party at the Winthrop Cultural Center and Lawn, Chris was exuberant enjoying the opportunities to speak with many friends and guests about the groundswell of interest that was happening for new treeing of Winthrop. After attending a brief Town Hall meeting with some counselors here about safety issues on the street bumpout at One Side Ave, and one of my last meetings with Chris was on Town Hall Lawn, both of us agreed that the overlooked untended plants and the beds at all the veterans monuments were, in his word, a disgrace. And this oversight was due to the 10-plus person shorthandiness of the DPW. However, we agreed that with some resident effort, his view that the Town Hall Lawn should be made into a showplace, quote, "which it deserves to be," was quite doable with the right kind of skilled gardening help. I mentioned my good connection with the DPW and his mention of the new plaque proposed from the Daughters of the American Republic, which was planned for the World War I statue. In addition, I made mention of that group's interest in tending to all of the beds. That conversation was the last one I had with Chris, though I heard later about his good work for a pollinator garden at the Senior Center with its director and a red maple tree planting with Diana Vines and her two young girls. The photo of that proud moment showed a beaming Chris and his friends. But that picture also showed exposed around his neck was a chain with a cross. And along with some cross tattoos on his arms, they were, in my view, all indicators of a deeper aspect to his character and clearer symbols of this man's strong faith to couple with his obvious quiet but fierce determination. At some point, our town might dedicate special trees to Chris. The Winthrop Loves Trees group suggested a large-scale party tree near the Panstee and Inglewood Park. My suggestion to them was also possibly a copper beach in front of the E.B. Newton Cultural Center, a spot of prime viewing to all residents. Both plantings are even more be symbolic of his firm resolve, sustained vigor, and stout efforts for Winthrop's town trees. But his memory will not fade as quickly as the leaves now dropping from the trees. And the spirit of his efforts can be renewed during the winter months. And come this spring, can resurface with a combined vigor from all of us. May Chris Zeig's impactful memory provide sustained encouragement for all of us to continue his very good work. On behalf of Winthrop Loves Trees, the Beautification Committee, and many close friends of his, respectfully submitted Frank Constantino.
Thank you, Frank. We'll make that part of the record.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thanks for the time, to say so.
Appreciate it. That's okay. It was well deserved for Chris. He was a great man. Okay, you can be seated. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 19, 2021 meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Council DeMarco, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Farino, is there any discussion on the minutes? Are there any additions? Are there any deletions? Are there any corrections? If there are none, all those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called. I think we better do name calls.
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Plakat?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Consulaterry?
Yes.
Council Honan? Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncorry?
Yes.
Okay, minutes are approved. Under general information and recommendations, I first of all would like to congratulate New Town Clerk, Denise Quist, on running an excellent election on November 2nd. It was her first job during an election. She did a great job. And all of the volunteers that came in and helped you out at the polls, I really appreciate the work they did. And I want to congratulate you. I also want to congratulate all the winners of all the different elections. There were quite a few people on the ballot. And I want to congratulate all the winners and hope that you enjoy your tenure, whether it's on the council, the school committee, or the library trustees. You've got a job to do to make Winthrop better, so please keep it up. Moving forward, we also have an issue under old business of the Northeast Vocational Schools' funding request for the new school. And with us today are representatives of the Northeast Vocational School. And I am going to turn the meeting over to Dave DeBarry to introduce who's with him and tell us why we should vote for this.
Okay, we'll do it. I'm actually going to flip it right over to our Winthrop representative, Rob O'Dwyer. He's going to say a few things and introduce us as well.
Yes, Robin is our elected official to the school board at the Northeast Vocational.
Yes, thanks very much, everybody. Members of the Town Council, Town Manager, and members of the public. Just so you're aware, I'm your representative here at Northeast Regional. And I'm here with Jade DeCone, who is the Finance Director, with Charlie Lyons, who's the Project Consultant, and then Dave DeBarry, who you all know as well. I was here last month, and there was some support around the building. I know that there's some general support around the building, and it's aged out. And we're ready for something new. And there's also been wait lists at Northeast Metro as well. So they're planning on expanding up to 1,600 students. I know we just recently, at least last few years, have gotten a new school building too. So this is not really unfamiliar. And I'll turn it over now to Dave.
Next, we have Kevin Nagro, who's our Project Manager. I told him there's only two ways to get in and out of Winthrop. He learned the hard way tonight, so he made it up. Thank you. I would like to start by really thanking whoever was responsible for my invitation to the Concession Stance dedication. It was an amazing ceremony. And I was so proud that our students were part of such a great dedication, as well as such a great building. And I got to meet some of you all there. And it really said a lot about Winthrop as a community. It made us proud to say that we do consider ourselves your other high school. And we are having more and more Winthrop students applying to Northeast with every year. So this is a great collaboration through the years. The support from Chief Tom "Manager" Delahonte has been amazing. He's always been VFRs. We communicate very well. Superintendent Lisa Howard as well has really looked to collaborate. And you would think that it would be second nature for a superintendent of a regional school to collaborate and vice versa with superintendents of the 12 districts. But it hasn't always been that way. So it's so refreshing to work together. But as you mentioned, we are here to discuss our new school project through the MSBA. And one of the things, after I'm done, is Mr. Lyons will go through all of the financial aspects that affect Winthrop and that we haven't answered any questions as well as you have. But I have to say, right now, the life of our building is coming to an end. It's over 50 years old. Its infrastructure is so far beyond repair. And I started one of my most recent meetings at Northeast comparing it to a new car. And there's two reasons we buy a new car. The first one is usually the better reason is we have some extra money in our pocket. We've always wanted a shiny new car with a great new audio system and all the bells and whistles. And we use it to impress people, and it's a great thing to have. The other hand is when your engine seizes on the Tobin Bridge, and you have four flat tires, and your car's overheating, and you have no choice but to get a new car because you need the transportation. I think we're in a situation where every time my phone rings or every time I get a text message from our maintenance department, I just pray that this isn't the day that our boiler shut down, that our roofs leaks, which our last time we checked, we had over 75 leaks in our roofs. You know, had more of a catastrophe than a small leak. And most recently, on the first day of school, or the first week of school, and Terry was there, we had a propane leak in our boiler room in our HVAC shops that, thank God, it was caught. But when we brought in Eastern Propane and we brought in the building inspector and they looked around, it's not a good situation. And now's the time that we really feel like we put ourselves in a good fiscal situation with the state, and we're going forward, and we're hoping we can get the support of the Board tonight. So as Mr. O'Dwyer mentioned, we had over 850 applications for 330 spots, meaning we had to turn away over 500 students. And that's not an easy thing to do. And I can tell you firsthand, as the previous principal, before being superintendent, it's not nice to get phone calls from parents, from grandparents, who really feel like this is the opportunity that could send their child or their grandchild off in the right direction. Because frankly, we all know that it's not a one-size-fits-all. Not every student learns the same. Some students do very well by a traditional education. Some students who are going on to certain career paths are absolutely better suited at Winthrop High School. And one of the things we try to do when we recruit new students is say, "We don't want you to leave your school because you don't like it there or don't want it to be there. We want you to come to Northeast because you want a vocational trade and you want to learn in a similar fashion as Northeast presents." So we had an open house last week, and it was probably one of the most bittersweet open houses we've had in many years. We probably had over 1,000 people more than we've ever had. So we had about 2,500 people touring the school. And many people on my staff thought it was great. And they said, "Isn't this great? What a turnout. This is the most we've ever had." And I said, "It's not great." I said, "Because that's more people we have to turn away." So we are projected to turn away over 600 students this year. And that's not a good problem to have. And that's one of the reasons why we are also expanding Northeast with the plans for the new school, is to give students those opportunities. But I'm going to turn it over to Charlie. And I'm going to leave with, we want to bring in students without crippling the budgets of our sending districts. And that's why we work so hard to get as much state funding to lower the municipal side of the funding equation. So Charlie will go over that, and then we'll all be here for questions afterwards. Yeah.
Mr. President, it's a pleasure for me to be here. The last time I was in a chamber like this, trust me, was 40 years ago when Bart Delio was a selectman. And we were trying to figure out how to clean up Boston Harbor. And a few months afterwards, I ended up as one of your representatives from the NWRA Board of Directors. I met Peggy Riley for the first time. And I served in that capacity for 12 years with Peggy and then Tom. Well, I thought they were related, but they weren't.
We got a lot of Rileys.
Lovely Marie Turner, who was just a wonderful person. And Paul Flanagan, who's son of Ben Menow, was the Town Manager. I was actually a selectman in Arlington for 24 years. And Andrew was Assistant Town Manager when I left office in 2005. So I really feel like a connection to this community. And I know we should go back through. And we used to say, if you build that thing right, it's going to have a major impact, environmental impact for Boston. And to look at Chelsea, to look at what's happening in South Boston and this community, it's just had a tremendous impact. But it was really because of a lot of work from a lot of people, but also the five men who gave their lives to that project, the Elphal Pike and what I had. So it's an honor for me to be back here. And...
You're welcome.
I worked for 28 years at Charleston Valley Technical with Bill Recker. I was the superintendent director there. And I've gone through five different MSBA projects. And David thought I knew a little bit about the MSBA project. So I'm helping them a little bit with this process. And all I can tell you is that somewhere between 1964 and 1977, the state gave tremendous amounts of money to create these things called regional vocational technical schools. There weren't any before 1964. The state provided significant funds, and 26 were created. And of the 351-plus dead ones, communities left in Massachusetts, 200 of them joined regional school districts. And Northeast, that was built in 1968, 53 years ago, was encouraged in formation by such diverse communities like Chelsea, close to Boston, and Reddy and North Reddy, up in the Hintonlands. And it serves 12 communities now. MSBA took a look at the project a few years ago, and it made a determination that it was the most popular vocational technical school in the state. They can only accept 41% of their students for the last 10 years. It has the highest waitlist in the state. It's woefully undersized. And so MSBA invited them into a grading process or grant process where they said, "We want you to study this thing. We want you to hire a competent operation project manager." And they did with PMA and Kevin Nagro. They formed a committee of experts from 12 different communities. They formed the School Building Committee. And for the last two years, they looked at 40 different options. They looked at population for students, from 1,481 students that they have now, all the way up to 1,700 in part. And they finally settled on a figure of 1,600 students. And working with Mr. DeBarry and the school committee and others, we sat down and we said, "How the heck are we going to be able to afford this?" And so we've taken a number of steps that's really been good. And we'll go over that in PowerPoint in a minute. And we're still going to fight for this, and fight for additional funds. But I want to explain to you two things. Number one, school construction costs have gone crazy since 2012. School construction costs are up 130% in Massachusetts. Two reasons. Primarily materials, i.e. exacerbated by COVID, and supplies, but also because there's not enough electricians and plumbers and HVAC technicians being trained, cost of labor. That's what this school does, and that's why they want to expand. But it's going to be expensive, and we're not going to sugarcoat this for any member of the council. So if you don't mind, I'd like to use some PowerPoints just sort of explain the process, where we are, and where we hope to go. And with that, let's go to the second slide. We're going to try to go over... Is it working? Okay, that's the first slide. The second slide, we're going to try to go over a few things tonight. And you've bet, and the members of the school board here has introduced us, but the future is now. We're going to talk a little bit about MSBA policy and legislative considerations that we've been working on. We're going to talk a little bit about current cost projections to towns. But we want to let you know, you're not going to have to pay a big bill for three years. This isn't going to impact you fiscally until fiscal year '26. And the reason for that is we're not going to borrow all the money this year. We're going to do it in stages, and we're going to do major construction in a year and a half in the summer. So the worst, the good news, the bad news is going to cost a lot of money. The good news is it's not going to impact the towns for a couple of years. We want to talk about your legislative representatives and how supportive they've been, particularly Representative Speaker Bart Delio and Representative Turco. They've been terrific. And I don't know Representative Turco except by reputation, but I know what he's done because of the student process. And I want to talk a little bit about who packed your parachute, which is something that we'll talk about at the end. Let's go to the next slide. These are the recent voc tech schools that have been built or rebuilt in Massachusetts. Minimet Tech opened a couple of years ago for 628 students. It cost $144.5 million to build. The total state MSBA grant was about 42.5, 45.2 million. They also added this year another $6 billion to renovate their fields. So they're assessing nine communities, $106 million for 628 students. Cape Cod Tech opened earlier this year. It cost $121 million to build. The total state grant was $41.2 million, meaning they had to charge their communities $75 million for 650 students. Blue Hills, which was a renovation job, was $84 million. They still only received, they see the maximum MSBA grant of $43.3 million, and cost the member towns $40 million for 1,000 kids. Northeast Metro, the logic is it needs a new school. They still have to educate 1,250 to 1,320 students every year for the next four years. So they're going to build a new school on property they own. And they're going to have a separate entrance, so it's not going to interfere with the existing school going on. The cost is $317 million, but the state grant's $141 million. And so if you compare apples to oranges, the cost per pupil, 1,600, bonded over 30 years. If you just take the $176 million divided by 1,600, it's about $110,000, not including interest. Minimet was $160,000, not including interest. It's going to serve a lot more kids. There are two other schools on the docket for this year. Bristol Plymouth just announced for 1,450 kids, the cost is $306 million. They're going to ask their communities for $182 million. And Greater Fall River, which is 75% made up of Fall River, is going to cost $125 million for 1,500 students. The fact that you've got three gateway cities, part of your district, and I'm talking Chelsea, Malton, and Reddy Air, means that the state's support for eligible project costs is going to be 76.84%. Can't go over 80%. So you're at maximum. And you're at maximum because of your legislators. Let's go to the next slide. Cost is determined by regional agreement. And we're going to give you a copy of this, okay, so you can take home and enjoy it, okay? But the way the regional agreement works is it takes the debt service, it blends it over a 30-year period. We're assuming a 4% interest rate if you conserve it. We'll do a ban the first year so we can do site costs next summer. But MSBA approved $141.7 million on August 25th. We have 120 days to get local support for this project from MSBA. And if we need to have an election, and it looks as though we'll probably have one in January, a popular election, we'll ask for an extension of that. As long as we get a popular vote plus one, the project can be approved district-wide. Northeast School Board approved the debt issuance on September 9th, set appropriate notices to the towns. In all the communities, most of them have either taken no action or they had tremendous votes of support. I went to Stone Town Meeting, they voted 1,600 to nothing to support this project. Last night, the Reddy Town Meeting voted 165 to 4 to support this project. It's been overwhelming.
Has anyone voted against it?
Let me go through that in a second, okay? Right now, Chelsea...
Just for you to know, Jeff Turco, who just walked in.
Oh, good. Nice to meet you. I want to talk about you in a few minutes.
You were getting kudos while you weren't here, Jeff.
I slid on you.
I was listening. You were just... We're not patronizing you to say good, but we are saying thank you, okay? And any of the local appropriating authorities legally takes a legal vote of no action. We're hoping that we can convince bluntly Chelsea to change its mind. I'm being real honest with you. I've been working very closely with Tom Ambrosino, and the representative can tell you, he's been working overtime to try to get more state aid for this project. So I guess we're not sure what they did because they actually didn't vote on the question. But it looks as though we're going to be meeting with your clerks next Thursday, and we're planning an election at this point in time. But that's not a decision for me to make. That's a decision for the school committee to make. And they're going to make that, I think, this week of what they want to do. The cost of member towns is really, the total project cost is $317 million, less the MSBA grant equals $176 million bonded over 30 years. Your share of that is 4.45%. Because your number is two...
Do you have that figure?
Yes, I do. I'm going to give it to you.
I'm trying to get you to the point, so we don't... Another half hour.
Because you're all like this, because there'll be a percentage at the end of this stuff. You're very good.
We have a lot of business tonight.
Yeah. You know, the max it's going to cost you right now is less than a half a million in any one year. You won't have that cost until FY '26.
And if Jeff gets you another $100 million, which he's trying to do, then we're happy.
Let me tell you, we haven't gotten eyes of yet. Let me go through this.
Close, though.
And lastly, each community's share is a yearly debt service. So if you send more kids in one year than you did the year before, you might have an uptick or a downtick. But it's recalculated every year, and the total debt service every year is about $10 million. Let's go to the next slide. This is a favor from Bart Delio, and actually, the minority leader, Brad Jones. In FY '21, they passed an outside section of the state budget, which for Northeast ensured an increase of MSBA grant of $25 million. It wouldn't have happened without the Speaker's help and without the minority leader's help. In other words, we would have been receiving right now, instead of $141 million, it'd be $25 million less. Or the cost of the towns would be $201 million instead of $176. We appreciate that. Let's go to the next slide. Future legislative consideration, we got a whole bunch of them. The superintendent... The superintendents have written letters to MSBA saying they're not assuming appropriate costs of the cost of constructing vocational education institutions. We've asked to expand the advisory board to MSBA to include two vocational technical experts. We've asked them to take into consideration the fact that when you build a vocational technical school, you have to build it 125% larger than a normal high school because of programmatic requirements. An auto shop's a lot bigger than an English classroom, okay? And we've given these suggestions to MSBA, letter signed by Dave DeBarry, superintendents of Bristol Plymouth, as well as the superintendent from down in regional. Let's go to the next slide. We've even looked at following legislation to expand your ability to exempt some of this debt service cost from the levy law. And I suggested that legislation. We want to increase MSBA to address the inequitable policy procedures that put a cap on determining eligible project costs. Let me give an example, Mr. President. The actual construction cost of this project is about $640 bucks a square foot. The maximum MSBA assumes for a square-footage construction cost today is $360 a square foot. So when they say they're going to pay for 76% or something, it's 76% of $360 a square foot, not the actual cost. And the other thing we've done is support efforts to commit American Rescue Act planned funds to further reduce the cost of this project. And a leader in that effort is a distinguished representative sitting behind me. Let's go to the next page. The House last week passed legislation on the left. It's in lines 229 to 231 of the ARPA Act, where they put aside $100 million to hopefully benefit these three school districts that are in the construction stage right now. We asked for $300 million. The Senate, they just came out with their bill the other day, and there's a lot of mumbo jumbo in there. I'm not going to call it bubbly hoop, but they fund everything, including kitchen sinks. And so those two pieces of legislation will go to conference committee. And what we're looking for is them to agree to Representative Turco, the last slide. What the representative did last week in the House debate, and he ought to be applauded for this, he filed an amendment along with his colleagues to increase that $100 million to $300 million. And to dedicate $100 million of that to the Northeast project, which would reduce the local project cost share to $76 million, okay? That's exactly what we asked them to do. He was a statewide leader in this effort. We reached out to other vocational technical schools. We got the support from the Mass Association of Vocational Administrators, the Alliance of Vocational Technical Education, all of the superintendents and all of the school committees from these three school districts. That bill is going to be conferenced in a couple of weeks. We don't know what's going to happen, but we assure you of this. If it weren't for Bob Delio, we'd be sitting here with a $25 million more expensive plant. And if it weren't for Representative Turco, we certainly wouldn't have any chance of getting additional funds from the ARPA legislation. So when you look at the numbers, this isn't about numbers. This is about where you train kids. And I told you that all of these Volk Tech schools have come of edge. They're all going to need to be rebuilt over the course of the next several years. This is the best plan for the best time, to train young people to be the artisans and the craftsmen and the technicians that our economy desperately needs. And so I'm not going to tell you. I want to let David go through a couple of slides to tell you a little bit about the project.
Yeah, we can just, real quickly, just, I know we like to see something when we're talking about so much money, so if we could flip, so... There are just some examples, there are two or three pictures we can move on of renderings. So currently, the red circle in that area is where our current building is. So after we build the new building, fingers crossed, we'd be able to tear that down and use it for parking or put fields. And I think there might be one more picture, so...
On top of the hill?
Yeah, so that would be on top. And we did a lot of work trying to blend the school into the hillside. We didn't realize until we got some pushback from the state that it's probably too nice-looking, even though it would have been, you know, no more money to do it this way rather than to have a big flat warehouse. So we went with this, and we are looking forward to, I think there's one more, to making this a reality. So sorry if we went over our luffens. I know you two had a busy night. But we are here for questions, and we'll keep the answers very brief.
Anyone on the council?
Very quick. You said 4.5%. What's the current enrollment of Winthrop students at the vocational school right now?
57.
I can tell you in one second.
57.
57.
All right.
Who said that?
People help me everywhere.
And we're hoping it grows. If it goes from 57, it goes up 15, 20%, your assessment's not going to go up. Because everyone's is going to go up. The debt will stay the same. You understand what I'm saying? The debt will stay the same.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Jim, go ahead. So a couple of things. Are you including any fields in this that are not part of the MSBA, you know, not part of the reimbursement, I guess?
Yes, very standard. We're not going overboard. I know there are, maybe we can get our own students to build us a field, tell us a concession scheme. But there are no extravagant fields, just your basic fields. We'll determine at one point if they're going to be turf or if it's going to be grass. We like grass, believe it or not, but the teams we play in sports don't.
And obviously, you know, we have funded our schools at 20 years. Obviously, the rates are better, the money's better, but it's a little more... Did you look into, I mean, this is 20 years instead of 30?
Yes.
We hired the same financial advisor that you have, the Hilltop Securities. And Peter Fraser's been great. And we looked at different variables. The school has to last 15 years. That's a requirement for MSBA. The maximum we can borrow far is 30. And so the figure was settled at 30, which was, we think is prudent and a wise thing to do. And the assumed interest rate is 4%. We think it's a little high, but who knows what's going to happen two years from now when we go to the market. And the banned interest rate is 3%. But if you went out today, you could borrow at 2.5%. So what we try to give you is the worst-case scenario rather than give you a rosy picture. But the 30 years seem to be the best recommendation.
And just, I'm sorry, Council President, just a couple more. Just, and that might be worth, I mean, I know you're going to go out in three tranches or whatever when you finance, then you might want to finance more if the interest rates look like they're going up. You might want to secure finance more. Now, back to the 57 number for Winthrop. So that's the number we're capped at right now. So that cap might go up to 67, whatever it happens to be. The per pupil expenditure is going to go up, it just is. Do we have any ballpark of what that's going to go up to?
You know, without sugarcoating, I mean, like all school budgets, they go up about 4% a year, I mean, a half, three and a half, 4% a year. You take pro, two and a half, you take everything else, you take state aid. Your community's share of that, the way the state works it, and it's, I'm going to try to express this as simplistically as possible. The state gives them state aid. And I tell them, when I say them, Northeast, who gets credit for that aid, okay? So if they get $8 million in aid, the state says you've got to give $1 million of that to Chelsea, and a half a million here, and $400,000 there. So the average locational school district in the state spends $23,000 per pupil because your class sizes are 10 to 1. I mean, you can't put 22 plumbers in, you know, in a shop. Or if you put metal fabricators in a shop, they come up with nicknames of stubby and lefty. And so there's a reason why the state provides some money for this. The state provides, every community gets about 17.5% Chapter 78 to support that cost. Some communities get more based upon property wealth and income, like Chelsea. And some communities only get 17.5% like Winchester, okay? And so whatever your cost is now per pupil, if you're really trying to think of fiscal planning, you're probably looking at 3.5, 4% operational cost increases a year forever. And that's being as honest as I can be.
I just, I thank you guys for coming. I think it's a well-worthy project. You know, I think it's nice to see the pretty pictures and everything else, but to hear the facts and the numbers. And there's a cost to everything you do in life, and I think this is well worth it. And I thank you for your time.
We're going to give you all those costs so you can enjoy reading this. Over the next couple of weeks. And we really would appreciate all of your support for this project.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just one quick question, Councilman.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you for coming tonight, and I very appreciate the presentation. And thank you for... Was there any consideration of maybe going to the unions, anybody for help, funding? You know, a lot of your graduates go on to the trades, go on to the unions, carpenters, laborers, plumbers, electricians. Do they, do you approach them at all for any kind of...
Yeah, well, great question. And I think the MSBA policy on extra, you know, money coming in from different sources is not, you know, the most favorable. So if you want to explain what they do, if we do get money out of...
I'm taking it from a different approach, I think, and I know what you're talking about. Yeah, anything that comes in, third-party funding, will come off of our grant, with the exception of the legislation that they are proposing at Boca Rillo. On past projects, we have received from different unions recoverability money, but that was in the down economy, when things aren't going so great. And to be more competitive, the unions might do something with the rate or help of their bidding. Given what's going on in this construction, there is a lot of work going on. There's a lot of backlog because of the supply chain issues and things like that. So I wouldn't count on it. But it's certainly something that the unions have done and then approached. We're proceeding under construction manager risk. Actually, the same firm that built Winthrop High School, the Bain Construction. And I anticipate on the non-trades, remember, filed some special master of law, can't touch that. But I'm sure they feel Bain will do what they can with the unions to make sure they're competitive on that non-trade sector.
And we have met with them. I met with the local laborers' union last week. We've met with the carpenters' union, who actually filed a petition to support the project in Saguas. And we are in talks. We reached out to the plumbing union and the electrical union actually yesterday. So that is definitely something that we, you know, feel would be a great support, even though we might not get a big chunk of money or of savings for the project. It is always good to have in your corner.
I can't emphasize, though, how much your representative and the legislature needs to minimize these costs. And we appreciate the...
I have a quick thing to... Just one quick thing, and I just, again, you just mentioned it, but just for the community to understand, if Representative Turco is able to secure funding of $100 million, the cost savings to Winthrop over the course of 30 years is well over $2 million bucks, just in interest and everything else. No, I know, it's approaching 3. So, you know, anything else that could compound that and get even more would be incredible. But the fact that that's out there on the table is just a great testament to...
So we want to measure him for a statue tonight. So I want the tape as yet, you know, but even the...
It's too big.
It's a lot of bronze. Just doing a bust. Just doing a bust.
All right, simply, you said you were anticipating you're going to a ballot. Is there a reason? Is it, are you getting a negativity?
Unless they flip or unless they change their mind, then we're going to need a ballot. We're going to need a ballot.
Who's "they" then?
At this point, Chelsea, and we've got to figure out if Saguas did the right thing or didn't do the right thing technically, but...
So you're looking for us to give you a yes vote tonight?
We're looking...
Or you're looking for us to do something as far as getting a letter to the legislature? What are you looking for us?
Inspiration from you tonight, more than anything.
Inspiration.
To support this project. Okay, Kevin, go ahead.
Mr. President, I know Northeast has been my friend ever since I've been the police chief here in Winthrop. Anytime I needed anything, including special consideration, to get a student that was not learning here in Winthrop in the traditional methods, they were always there. They've always been there for Winthrop and Winthrop students. This is equity in education. I know as a manager, I have a budget to balance. It's hard to do with additional costs. As a manager, I have one opinion. As a citizen, I have a complete other opinion of Northeast folk. This is equity in education. Our Winthrop kids deserve the same type of education going to Northeast as we provide here, including 21st century technology. If they go to a vote, and when they go to a vote, I, as a citizen, will be supporting Northeast on that ballot. So I just wanted to thank them for coming and putting up with me over the last four months. It hasn't been easy. And thank you to all the council members for your consideration tonight.
Jeff?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council. Jeff Turco, greeting too. I just wanted to come and say that I fully support this project. I'm thrilled to have worked with my colleagues on the Hill, Rep Ryan, Rep Janino, Rep Wong, and so many others from the other school districts that are affected by this to try to push to get this extra. We're thrilled to have the $100 million in the House budget. We're hoping to ultimately get to 300. Just by way of background, the concern amongst leadership on why we didn't go to 300 right away is because the opera money is available for a whole host of uses. And everyone expected that the infrastructure package would ultimately pass and be signed into law by the president, which it was this week. And so what they didn't want to do was commit the opera money to infrastructure money, and then all of a sudden be turned around and say, here's $11.7 billion of infrastructure money the Commonwealth can spend. And so the commitment that's been made by leadership, not to a specific number, is, look, hold your fire on trying to get even more than the $100 million. You know, we promise you, as soon as the infrastructure bill, the money comes down the pike, we'll entertain, this is clearly something that should be considered. Not a firm commitment that, yes, we'll give you the money, but a firm commitment that the discussion will be had there. There's widespread support amongst the legislature, at least amongst the House, for this type of money. As the chief said, and the acting town manager said, it is equity. It is an investment in the future. Somebody that went to Northeast Regional as a freshman, I can attest that the quality of the education there, both academically and on the trades, is just unbelievable. My only gripe, and I've said this to Houseways and me and Chairman Mike Witz and to the speaker himself, is frankly, I think we should shoot bigger and we should build the schools, all three schools, at 200% of capacity. Because when you listen to the discussions that have been had over the last, you know, couple of months about equity and getting people admitted to the schools, and they say, well, we need to make it fairer because there's 150% waitlist for, you know, for every one spot, there's 1.5 kids trying to get in. So to me, let's expand for the future, go to 200%. And let's really put our money where our mouth is from a Commonwealth standpoint. So that's something that I'm pushing up on the Hill. And, you know, Superintendent DeBarry's been great in his team in terms of giving us information so that we can go and make the pitch. But the $100 million, I'm fairly confident, will come out of conference. We are going in recess on the 17th until January. So I think the expectation is that the Senate will pass their opera bill this week, and we're hoping that there'll be a quick conference. And next week, we'll actually vote and send it to the governor for the use of the opera money. So that's what the forecast looks like. I know it's a difficult thing to vote, to commit the town to, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt service. But this is an investment in the kids. This is an investment in the future. And I talked about it over the last year, about the need to say, you know, we should take pride in the fact that our kids are plumbers, are electricians, are auto repair. You know, that's a great thing. And those are the people that were my neighbors and my friends growing up and the families in my community growing up that made the community such a great place. So I urge you to support this project and take a leap of faith with everyone at the table here and support vocational education, you know, to the next level. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Representative Turco. And thank you all for being here and giving us that excellent presentation. And you've got a minute, go ahead.
Just rip it. He's terrific, I knew him that.
He is terrific.
He replicates post-I-90 in this community. But we want you to know that every nickel he gets us, we're going to use it to reduce costs. We want to be very clear about that. This project isn't going over $317 million. If he gets us a lot more money in a few years, we might put ambition on it, okay? This project will be capped at $176, less whatever he gets us, and it's capped at $317 million, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Moving on. Still on to general information and recommendations. I'd like to call on Councilor Clark.
I wanted to just tell you that I signed up for the Citizens Police Academy this year. And I've started about two, three classes, I think, so far. And I am finding this a really marvelous opportunity to learn about not only the police department and other police departments, but our town. I'm really learning a lot. And I think all the counselors should avail themselves of this opportunity. I was surprised to learn that I'm only the second counselor that has ever taken this. It's really a great opportunity to learn a lot, especially now when we're thinking about putting up a new public safety building. It's a good opportunity to see what they've got and what some of the other opportunities are. So I commend this to all of you.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. I wanted to just give another general information and that information is from the Health Department. I met with Meredith Hurley yesterday and she told me that things are going very well in the past month. She gave out five hundred vaccines, which is amazing. Two hundred and ten of them were Winter High School students, she held a clinic and she had two hundred and ten students take it. The other two hundred and ninety doses were given to sick and shut-ins and people that can't get out of the house to get their vaccinations. But she encourages everyone, she's going to have another clinic just after Thanksgiving, but she encourages anyone that is not vaccinated to set up an appointment with CVS and get yourself vaccinated and that includes students as well as adults, okay? Moving on, we have public hearings. And the first public hearing is public hearing on National Grid Pleasant Street. Are you representing it?
I am, good evening, my name is Adewa Hittinavat. And I'm here on behalf of National Grid, one seventy, the first street in Moldan. We care about petition, request for a customer-driven job where the customer is at five fifty Pleasant Street. They're doing siding work on their building and unfortunately, they can't get to their siding with our wires on the pole being so close to the building that they offered, you know, we offered them to outbreak the lines and that wasn't enough. So they have asked that we relocate two poles temporarily across the street from their current location until they get their siding done and we'll pull them back.
Steve, have you been aware of this project?
I, yeah, it has been, came to my office. When it was petitioned to me, it wasn't a temporary, it was a permanent move. So this is the first I'm hearing that it's a temporary move of the poles. I did voice my concern that when Atlantis Marina was built, that neighborhood got a, you know, lost their views to this building and now putting poles in front of their homes is kind of added insult to injury. I'm happy, much happier to hear that they're a temporary move, but I just want to confirm that that's actually true and that they will be going back and that all the sidewalks will be fully restored and, you know, we can't get double, we can't get double poles removed in town.
Right.
Surprised how quickly we can get.
Like to double poles?
Poles, temporary.
Temporary for fifty years?
This is temporary.
Let's have some water. Do you have a question, can I tell me? Okay, you're assuring us that that is a temporary fixture and you take two poles out, put them across the street and then put them back, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Are the two poles a double pole or are they two separate poles?
Nope, they're just going to be two separate poles. We're not touching Verizon wires, so this is going to be owned by National Grid, these poles. So when time comes for the removal, we will be responsible for the removal. Therefore, it's going to be done in a timely manner, it's not going to be like you're saying.
All right, anyone on the council have any questions, Mr. Chairman? Barbara?
Is this going to affect any trees?
No, no trees.
Any other councillor general?
This is the only way to do this, there is no other way to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish other than moving these poles.
We've exhausted our resources, like I said, we've put it across arms, we've extended the crossarms eight feet further and still the same situation. It's not enough for them to be able to decide on the building.
Okay, and how, what's the estimated timeframe on this? That's, is that to finish?
Right, so for the, for the poles?
Uh, yeah.
We're looking at one day, we're looking at days at most.
So you're going to move them and on one day and then you're going to put them back, when? When are they going to go back to their original location?
So the reason we're relocating them is because this customer is still in the siding.
Right.
I would say six months on, based on their siding.
Okay.
Could be a year, but this is the customer that is.
They're six months behind.
Councilor Terry?
The building's sided now, correct?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, say it again?
The building is sided now, they're changing the siding.
I believe so.
How was it sided to begin with?
I'm not sure, I think that was exactly before.
Is this your property?
Yes.
Yeah, you have.
We represent, we both represent the association.
Jim, Jim Dougherty is the president of our Board of Trustees, Linda Carr Gill.
Would you identify someone and then tell us where.
I am the treasurer of the Board of Trustees, we are both unit owners of the property. The problem with the building is the siding is delaminating, it's hardy paneling and plank. It was built circa two thousand and seven, it has been delaminating since then. If you look at the front of the building on Pleasant Street, it is exceedingly unattractive, we understand that. There are leaks in the window areas in the common hallway as a result of the delamination of the hardy paneling and the plank. So we need to remove that and replace it with another product. So it's not, it's not intended to be a beautification project, it's a necessary repair to stop the leaks that have been entering into the building now for a number of years. So, Jim, I don't know if that answers your question.
I mean, I guess my question was, there was siding put up originally with the poles there?
No, the poles were not.
Oh, the poles were there after the.
The poles may have been there, but the six hundred, what is it, six hundred kilovolt line was put in after the building was there and it's within ten feet of the building. We cannot get, there's no contract on earth that will send any human beings up there next to that kind of pole.
I guess my only concern is, you know, time we man, we've heard from National Grid an awful lot over the years. We have to make sure that those poles, I mean, I would want something guaranteed. The only thing that are on the poles is National Grid, so no other, no Comcast, no Verizon. Because then we have to wait for them to move their.
So exactly, these new poles are only going to be for Verizon. I mean, apologies, the Verizon and the other cables are staying on the existing poles. The new poles will be only in N grid. Will not have any Verizon, these are going to be owned by National Grid.
Okay, thank you. Just. Any other councillor?
Question for, I guess, the administration, where the, the folks whose homes these poles are going to be in front of, were they made aware of this proposal and were they invited to come speak tonight?
You know, this was advertised as a public hearing and I think we did a door-to-door, but we normally don't do a door-to-door on National Grid petitions. You know, this project has been, it's probably about six months behind. My initial meetings were last April with the, with the Atlantis Marina and, you know, we have, the problem is, is we have to get those buckets up in the air. So one lane of Pleasant Street will be closed, we don't, we're not going to be able to do this in the middle of January and February. So I don't want people to think it's, hey, it's two months from today. It's going to depend on weather, the wind and the speed of the wind, so probably this is a spring project. Do you agree with that?
Correct.
And so, you know, we'll get it done as quickly as possible, but it's going to be.
It's not being voted on, it's a new business.
No, yeah, just asking the question, yeah, okay.
Does anyone else in the council have any questions?
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions or anything they'd like to say about it since you had attendance there, which I'd just say anything else?
No, unless there are questions, I'll second.
Thank you, then here we know no one else, I'll close the public hearing on the first one. Second public hearing is the town council appropriate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the MWRA lead line replacement cost. Are you taking this, Jim, or are you taking this, Steve?
Well, I mean, we did, you're going to, it's open, right? The hearing's open, okay. We did meet in finance on, I think, all of the following, one of them, we did meet along with Rules and Ordinance. We did ask questions of the DPW director, this is a typical yearly lead line replacement that we've done continuously for the past eight years maybe, seven years and.
Four.
Okay. And we are including some properties on Revere Street now because while the roads open, we might as well attend to them. So there's a lot of thought that goes into where they're doing these replacements, this is part of the, it's, it's, it's an obligation of the town to do these and we have a, we've done about five hundred.
We have five hundred left.
We have five hundred left to do, so.
Yeah, we've got one hundred a year.
Yeah, so we're, we have five years left, it's a ten-year program basically and we did have positive action on this, we do request positive action.
Does anyone else in the council want to be heard on this? Does anyone in the audience want to be heard on this? Anyone on Zoom want to be heard?
No hands.
No hands, seeing no hands, I will close the hearing. I will now open the hearing on appropriating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Phase Three sewer assessment study.
This also, Council President, this was also brought up in finance and we also met with DPW director on this. This is through a zero-interest grant.
It's a five-year zero.
It's a five-year interest, zero-interest loan from the MWRA. It's on the sewer side, not the water side, it is already included in the rate, it's been already accounted for. And we do have positive recommendation on this.
Okay, thank you, does anyone in the audience want to speak on this? Anyone on the Zoom? Any hands?
No hands.
Seeing none, I will close the meeting on two hundred and fifty thousand for the assessment study. I will now open a public hearing on whether or not we should adopt new fees for the Department of DPW. Meeting is now open, finance committee already look at this or?
We did along with Rules and Ordinance, we met earlier this evening. Again, DPW director was there, there were not a significant amount of, you know, they went through all their fees and they tried to compare them to other cities and towns around and they made suggestions on, I think, three or four, three increases. Not, you know, out of the realm by any stretch. One is on a curb cut, we did not have a fee on it, we had a fee on other services regarding it, but the curb cut is a hundred and fifty dollar fee is what's being recommended. Adding a fee for a new water line being brought in and also increasing a fee for interment for residents along with non-residents. We did, we were satisfied with all the answers that was given to us by the DPW director. They are still lower than the surrounding communities to us and we do have positive action on this.
Recommendation coming, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on it, Steve, you want to?
I'm happy to speak, I mean, he covered it pretty well. Those are the three recommendations that I made after the full analysis of all of that.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Steve, as a Rules and Ordinance chairman, you'd be writing that new ordinance to put those fees into the managers' fees or separately into the?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, except for that, for the motion, okay. All right, anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Hearing none, we'll close the meeting on the new fees for DPW and I will now open a public hearing on the town council's vote to transfer thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollars from capital stabilization to general fund for the Winter Police Department firing range.
Yeah, these are for air units and heating units at the fire range, it's not for the fire range itself, it's in the fire range. But there's also, and it's not necessarily just for comfort of the police officers, although that's a great thing. It's for the pipes that are within that unit and we don't want to freeze any of the pipes. We do have positive recommendation on this as well. The cost, if we were not to do this and close the fire range, so we wouldn't freeze the pipes, we'd be outsourcing this to, to Fire Range up in Bedford and.
Evans, yeah.
Yeah, so the, you know, the cost would probably exceed the cost of fixing what we have here. So we do have positive recommendation on this as well.
All right, does anyone in the audience wish to be heard? Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to be heard on this? Seeing no hands, I will close the public hearing on the thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollar transfer. All right, we're now into public comment, public comment, audience, public comment? Karen?
Hi, Karen Chau, I was Creaseville two. After listening to the presentation of the Fall Forum on the new public safety building, I think I was kind of disappointed, did not see anything on tonight's agenda about anything to discuss that at all. I did appreciate everything that Director of DPW did say about possibly moving the DPW, moving the public safety building to where the Gorman Fort Banks is and establishing a new Gorman Fort Banks at the old middle school site. I don't have to go into all the details on that, I don't think it's necessary, but I believe myself, being on the SBAC, that it'll probably be eight years before you could see a new school at that site. And if that's true, to renovate the Gorman Fort Banks to make it a public safety building could entail another two to three years. I don't think that the police or the fire department want to wait another ten or eleven years to get a new home. We listened at the finance meeting, the interim town manager slash police chief tell us about the deplorable conditions that are going on right now in the, in the police station. And I will only state what I have stated for months and months and months and months. Our firefighters deserve a better home than what they have now. And certainly, the people that defend us on the streets with their guns deserve better environment than what they have now. I really believe, and I don't believe, that because there is not a firing range at the Little League site, that that should deter you from deciding where to put a new building. I'm not saying that it's not good because it isn't good, I mean, we really do need a firing range. But I'm sure that there's another spot in this town that a fire range could be built or renovated or something to have this happen. I hope that you're not going to let this go till next year because if it goes till next year, I can honestly say, and I've said this before too, in my lifetime, I probably will never see it. And I've been listening to it since nineteen ninety-two.
Thank you, anyone else in the audience? My public comment, I see hands up.
Yeah, we have Julia Wallace.
Is that Julia Wallace? Julia, on.
Hi, good evening, everyone, thank you, that was a great presentation, I learned a lot about the potential school. So I'm calling tonight about an item under old business, it's about the grant, which I think, I think you mean the Mass Trails Grant from Mass DOT is listed on your agenda as coming from Mass DCR. I just want to first clarify that that's, we're talking about the same thing?
Mass Trails, that's right.
For the Greenway extension, the vote to accept the eighty-seven thousand dollar grant.
Yep, Mass Trails Grant.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm just making sure I'm clear because on my agenda it says DCR. So, okay, so I just wanted to speak about it a little bit, I know it's been on the agenda for a little while and I'm sorry that we haven't introduced a little more on it, but this is a project that dates back, you know, before two thousand. It's really a homegrown effort that's evolved over time and finally gained enormous momentum. So a while years ago, when Bike Winthrop engaged the community and Speaker Delio, Rep Mataro, to get money from the state to do a feasibility study for what it would look like, what routes we could take to extend at East Boston Greenway now to Mary Ellen Wall Street Way from East Boston into Winthrop to provide a safe, accessible, healthy way to get in and out of Winthrop for transportation, community, or recreation by bike or foot. And currently, you know, we don't really have that option, so the feasibility study completed, working with the Friends of the Mary Ellen Wall Street Way. And we actually have someone from there on the call tonight and because that study was completed, we were then able to compete for the Mass Trails Grant to move into design. And that's what this grant is for and we are so lucky to receive these funds and just so excited and proud of the work. This has taken place over the last few years, the community has been so supportive, I can't remember how many comments we had in a public survey, but you read that little Open Streets event last year where we had the consultants from Peterson with all the potential routes that, you know, would it cross the Belle Isle Marsh, would it go along Bayswater? And we have our preferred alternative and now, now is the time to get into design. And then after that comes, you know, the heavy lifting of construction and it is a capital project and multi-stakeholders. This is not something that the town is like any paying for is possible for paying for. But we are the ones who get to reap the greatest benefit and the enormous health and environmental and equity improvements and benefits of having an asset like this in our town. So I really hope that you will vote through, officially accept this grant tonight. Thank you very much and please feel free to reach out to me myself or Chris Aylo, my partner at Bike Winthrop, with any questions about it. And Michelle Moon from the Friends of Mary Ellen Wall Street Way is also on this call tonight.
Just to correct the record, it's a Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation Mass Trails Grant Award. So I just want to make sure. It's not just a Mass Trails, it's both Department of Conservation and Recreation Mass Trails Grant.
Okay. All right, moving on, is there anyone else?
Julia, turn your hand up again.
Was it?
Nope, no more. No more hands up.
Okay, no, no more hands up, nobody else in the audience? Hearing none, we'll close. Public comment, any correspondence? I know we've seen numerous correspondence about the elections to the school committee, but other than that?
Yeah, we've had several emails from citizens in reference to the open seat in the school committee about half and half, or Elaine Petrie, or Celeste Hanonan. We've also received several letters in reference to the Fort Banks access road, of which citizens believe this is a desperate need for safety for everyone. And we received a letter from Mr. Demento who requested that it be noted at the TC meeting. He refers to the current solid waste recycling manager in comparison to the DPW Director and the duties of both positions.
Okay. All right, moving on, committee reports. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee met earlier this evening. We had multiple items on the agenda. We've discussed most of them in public hearings. There was the $750,000 MWA lead line replacement, which is coming out with positive action along with the $250,000.
All of the items that are under Old Business?
All of the items under Old Business have come out with positive recommendation and just to, I mean, I guess we could go over the more in Old Business, so that's fine.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
All right, the joint committee. That was on the track, on the fees for?
The joint committee also, as we stated in the public hearing, came out with positive recommendation. We will go over that in Old Business as well.
Okay. Do you have a separate Rules and Ordinances Committee, Councilor?
Yes. So the Rules and Ordinances Committee met earlier tonight, taking up two issues. One, the signage policy in the community as well as the vicious ant-dog ordinance that we have in, in place now, both of which needed to be updated in light of legislative and constitutional rulings that have come down within the past 10 years and we haven't updated our ordinances, so we're doing that now. In regards to the sign ordinances, in order to come in compliance with the First Amendment, there was a ruling in 2015 which held that there's heightened constitutional scrutiny to rules that are in place when you are making a content-based determination for a sign or any type of rule that chooses one side over another, when it comes from a different speaker or when it comes from a certain perspective. There is a heightened constitutional scrutiny that's going to be applied to it. And after reviewing that with town's legal counsel, we felt that there were some, some areas of our current sign ordinances which needed to be changed in order to come into compliance with that Supreme Court decision. Specifically, a section around political signs, prohibitions on, on advertising products that are not sold on the premises. Or the, we also have another section which has to do with permit, exemptions for individuals or groups which would not be, which would not need to adhere to the other existing sign ordinances. So we're going, we're going to recommend that those be taken off the books or at the very least be, be reviewed by the planning board and the various committees that need to take these up. This is a zoning policy, so this triggers the Mass General Law Chapter 40, Section 5 requirement, which require us to send it to the planning board, provide notice to the community and of the like. So it'll look just like any other zoning change that we would have had to have made. It extends the timeline that we need to do these things within, but, but that, that's the requirements that need to be put into place. We also took up a new animal ordinance that will be reviewed by the committee. We were sent a draft model ordinance. This is done in response to a 2013 law which was put on the books by the legislature, which provides certain flexibilities and mandates on municipalities across the state in regards to how it handles animals and, and licensing and whatnot, violations. So we had some questions for the, that, for the ordinance that was sent over to us by them. And so that was tabled for another two weeks for the next meeting before we actually suggest something is passed. But we have one and we hope to bring it to the council within the next week. So that's what we did at our meeting.
Okay. And you're going to send the signage one to the planning board?
Yeah, I just, the reason why we, yeah, so we, we need to make sure that we're in compliance with the, with Chapter 40, Section 5. So to just pass that right now might be premature. So I wanted to make sure that we had the proper notice requirements and everything before we actually passed something. But we do have an ordinance that I think the committee is comfortable with and we hope to move forward with it as soon as we can.
Okay. So then I would direct the town clerk and council clerk to forward it to the planning board to take a look at.
Okay.
You know, in accordance with the law, we have to. Okay, Public Health and Safety Committee?
Okay, the Public Safety Committee met on November 3rd with the full committee and Rachel Kelly and numerous participants, including members of the school committee. All were concerned with the solution to the traffic problem at drop-off and pickup times at the Gorman Fort Banks School. Rachel reported that we do have an opportunity for a funding grant, but we will need a new feasibility study and traffic study since the previous ones were 200, 2008 studies and they're too old. Multiple suggestions were made for both access roads for cars and for pedestrians as well as changes to pick up and drop off times and returning to the neighborhood school system. I've written up the minutes and met with Jim Leteri from Finance to put a rough cost estimate on each of the suggestions. Next steps are to distribute these minutes and involve the Gorman Fort Banks principal and administration. We will meet again to choose a practical path forward.
Okay, so you are keeping this on, you're, works it in your committee? You will have another meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, within two weeks, okay, that's great. Moving on, Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you mentioned earlier, we currently have 63 positive cases of the 2,100 people, roughly about 2,100 people that were tested in the last two weeks. That brings that positive percentage to 3%. The five to 11-year-olds, as you mentioned earlier, 210 of those were vaccinated at the senior center last Saturday, it was a little bit loud with everyone getting their shots, but Meredith survived. I know it's on your, on your business, new business is that equitable approach to public safety grant that Meredith and, I applied for, Meredith did all the legwork on this grant, but it adds clinicians and social workers, behavioral health experts to her department to team up with the police department. It adds an additional peer recovery coach and community navigator to our, to our player program. It also gives us about $40,000 in training money, some of which would be used in the police department for the implicit bias training that we started last year to continue with that this year. So that's the health and public safety. Just want to also just take a moment to recognize, this week alone, four Boston police officers were injured. One was stabbed, three were shot tonight earlier before this meeting. So I just wanted to wish them well on quick recoveries and thoughts and prayers with their family as they recover hopefully quickly. I potentially could be out of state at the user force conference, depends on personal issues, from November 29th to December 2nd. I did sign a notice of intent to award D. Police Corporation the Bartlett Road Sewer Project. That's going to be funded out of the office money. Wanted to thank Frank Constantino and his beautification committee for the great work they've done on the front, the front of town hall, especially as we celebrate Veterans Day this Thursday at 11 o'clock. It was well, well needed and we appreciate his work, takes the pressure off of Steve. I think everyone probably is aware the Board of Health is in the process of passing a trash regulation. So there'd be a Board of Health policy in place. We will review it once it's passed for financial implications on that policy. And we report back to the council as we see appropriate, if there's a financial impact on that. I just wanted to say on signs, thank you, Councilor Christopher on that. I just want to be careful that we, you know, don't have no sign regulations because that means we get big banners and all over town, like we see in Revere when we cross the line. And so, content neutral.
It was very narrowly tailored.
Content neutral restrictions are, I, I appreciate your efforts in getting us there. The trees in the center, as I promised Councilor Christopher as well, that we did explore with the assistance of the DPW to see if the species that were recommended by the tree committee, if we could swap the current species out. It is neutral on species, it means that there's no effect based on the species of the ones that we have in the project. There is no cost, it's neutral on cost as well. My plans would be to move forward in replacing those unless I hear from the council they don't want them replaced. You know, I, I think I've done my due diligence. We've sent it to the landscape architects to confirm with swapping these trees out. So that's my intent and I'll be willing to discuss it with, with the council if they see fit. Councilor Honan is not here tonight. She did ask me to prepare some information for her on a motion for a public safety building. And I just wanted to, to mention that because she's not here to mention it herself. I have not gotten that to her and I apologize. I will get that to her in the next couple of days. The Town Manager's Search Committee, you know, not the search committee, but the Town Manager contract to have professionals guide the search committee has been signed. It's Community Paradigm. They have extensive experience. One of the gentlemen who owns the company is the former Lowell Town Manager, works with the former Burlington Town Manager, the bold teacher at Suffolk University. They know who's out there and who's the up and comings. So I'm looking forward to, for both Council President and Council President-elect to work with them and, and move that forward. Public Skate starts every Sunday at 12:40 at 1:50 PM, it's $3. The new resident parking stickers are now available online. The winter ferry season will end on November 19th, this, next Friday. Saturday, November 20th and Saturday, December 18th is leaf pickup and it will begin at 7:00 AM. Please make sure your bags are out by 7:00 AM and grass and leaves only, no tree branches and no plastic bags. Has to be in the lawn bags, please. Veterans Day, again, we mentioned that earlier at 11 o'clock, this Thursday. So that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
What was the name of that company again, I'm sorry?
Community Paradigm.
Community?
Community Paradigm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, does anyone in the council have any questions for the Town Manager? Councilor Farino?
I just wanted an update on the RFP for the E.V. Newton.
I will look at my DPW Director on the status of the RFP for the E.V. Newton clock tower.
It's with the procurement officer. I know Richard Secchuni drafted the, drafted the bid documents. I will find out when, when that's going in the central register. The bid, bid package is complete.
Any other questions? Councilor Joe, you had your end of?
Yeah, this is probably a question for Meredith, but, yeah, whatever, I'll test you. Where are we in terms of, I guess, of the vaccines that were distributed last month? Were those, did those include boosters or were those first-time vaccinated folks and then?
So the 201 that were done Saturday, first time, is five to 11-year-olds.
Okay.
The other 205 included boosters to homebound residents that can't get out. So basically, she recalled all the ones that were homebound on the first and second shot. She recalled them for boosters. Public Safety has received boosters. So we've started the process of, of the boosters.
Okay.
And again, she'll have another clinic. Anyone that had needs of a booster can, can contact her office.
Sure.
And she can assist and tell us when we're going to have them and, and where we're going to have them.
Okay, great.
Did it pass?
Thanks, very flying calls.
Just back to the public safety bill for a minute. We had that nice presentation, which was a duplicate presentation that we had last year, except increased cost. But can we, there are issues with both sites and we're not going to get into a discussion now about it, but one thing that was said, I think by you, and I don't know if it was at the last time or not, or maybe the DPW Director, there was some sort of infrastructure, concrete, something that's in that street that prevented us from possibly looking at Little League. Is that true or no?
I, I don't think we said infrastructure. So the infrastructure, we did say there is a water sewer.
There's a storm drain.
A storm drain?
A storm drain, a major storm drain, a 30-inch corrugated pipe that's failing and it's deteriorating, but it's also got a major belly in it, right in the area of the A field. To correct that problem, we have to go, well, the problem's got to be corrected regardless, but to correct the problem, you have to go all the way up to Locust Street to, to, to basically relay that pipe to get the proper pitch. That pipe's got to get all the way to the drainage swale right beyond Miller's Field. So it drains about a third of the town, you know, upper highlands, the lower highlands are all coming down.
My, I guess my quick question is, I, I have big issues with both sites for numerous reasons, including the foundation of them and the cost, which I think might be prohibited to do that. But I would like you maybe, for the next meeting, have, one of the sections had a, like a spreadsheet, kind of like a scoring sheet as to different locations. Some of them were taken off the table by the former Town Manager, blah, blah, blah. If we could just have a detailed list of those locations and an approximate square footage of what a public safety building would entail would be great for the next meeting.
Can I just add one question back? Are we looking public safety, police, and fire?
Well, I'd like to look at square footage for public safety, police, and fire and public safety for fire. I mean, you know.
Are you going to include public health in either one of those?
Yes, I think you would. I mean, I think I just want to get a square footage. You know what, if it's three square footage, to get the square footage so we can look at a footprint of that.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilor Tomaco?
Okay, are you sure? Yeah. One thing that kind of, I don't know, bothered me at the Fall Forum, and this is not a knock on you, Chief. We, you know, we had the company present, you know, the options for where they thought the best place was to put a public safety building. Back in December of 2020, I believe, and I, Pete, you can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. We actually had a subcommittee meeting where we discussed potentially putting the, the public safety building on either A, the seventh, I think it's the seventh hole of the golf course, or B, the A field. And we had public comment like you wouldn't believe, everybody calling in saying, we don't want it there. We don't want it there, we want our A field. You know, if you get rid of one hole on a golf course, that's only nine holes to begin with, you have no golf course anymore. So we had all this input and I think, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think you tabled it. I think you were chairing that committee and you tabled it.
That was me.
It was you and we tabled it. We, we ended up tabling it. So my question, I guess, is, after we had this meeting, we had all this public input coming to us saying, that's not the place to put it. Then why do we spend money to have a firm go and tell us to put it there eight, nine, 10 months later?
Well, I didn't, A, it wasn't, it was before your meeting because as Jim Riley pointed out, it was the same presentation a year earlier. This was your booster. Look at the Fall Forum as your booster shot. I'm getting the conversation back to the table because it laid dormant for a year.
Okay.
So let's have the discussion and let's have public input and let's figure out where we want to put it and then let's see if the public wants to fund it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the, that's, this is where the conversation needs to be at.
Yeah.
And I know we all put out fires and more important, some things come up and just priority goes up. Other things fall to the bottom of the rack. It's time to bring up the bottom of the rack and put it back on top.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It was my understanding that it was not the Town Manager that took the, those other sites off. It was the committee that was hired to choose a site and they looked at all of these sites and chose the two that we presented.
I'm just saying what was told at the, at the Fall Forum, I specifically asked the Town Manager.
I think it was specific to the middle school site.
Yes.
The question was specific to the middle school site.
Correct.
And you asked, why was it grayed out and why was it?
I think Mr. DeMarco, Councilor DeMarco asked why and then I asked who and you, and it was answered as we were, they were instructed to not use that site. And then I followed up with a question saying, who instructed them? And I believe you stated the former town manager.
Yeah, I, yeah, I stated my, yeah.
Okay.
But it wasn't all the rest of the sites?
No, no, no. I didn't say anything about the rest of the sites. Anyone else for questions to town manager?
Hearing none, we'll move on to the school committee report. And the school committee met last night here in this room and we had an informative meeting. And there's been a training program going on for teachers. We've learned that in this past week, they had four students and I think two staff members, they tested positive. But there have been no outbreaks in school at all. I understand there was a small outbreak in the preschool this past week in town, but there's been no outbreaks. Our numbers in school and staff are down and we're in good shape as far as positive tests in the school with no school outbreaks. The teachers have been undergoing a training program. And because October 27th was canceled, the day of the big storm that we had here and they had to cancel. They have changed the school calendar. The school is going to be going on until June 15th instead of 14th. They've added a date to the school calendar. I'm very happy to announce that both the boys soccer team and the boys football team have made the playoffs. And not only did they make the playoffs, they both won their first game in the playoffs. And they'll both be playing Rockland this week. I think the football's playing Friday night in the.
They got moved to Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay. And good luck to both teams and we're proud of you making the playoffs and doing a good job in playoffs so far. The drama department will be hosting the musical Charlie Brown on November 13th and 14th. There'll be three showings. So, get online and get your tickets if you want to go to that musical. And finally, the mask department of education has extended the mask mandate until January 15th. And that was what happened at the school committee last night. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business. Under old business, the first item is the town council vote on the non-peace vocational schools funding request for a new school. Does someone have a motion?
There's a motion that came out of the last finance committee meeting. Now, it's a little backwards motion. But the motion states that the town council hereby expressly disapproves the $317,422,620 borrowing and debt authorization on September 9th, 2021 by the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School District Committee for the purpose of paying cost of designing, engineering, constructing and equipping the new Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School and related athletic facilities and expressly does not authorize the payment of any share of the district's debt for this purpose or take any other action relative thereto. That came out of finance committee with a unfavorable recommendation. And just to clarify, the unfavorable recommendation is saying that the finance committee is recommending that we do approve the funding for the Northeast Regional Vocational School.
So, just out of protocol, I think we have to vote?
You have.
No on the motion.
If you want to find.
Or, or we withdraw the motion.
Correct. But by withdrawing the motion, you're just, you're agreeing with the plan to go forward.
But then you can have a new motion to approve the funding.
So, a no vote.
I don't think you can amend it completely to be into the opposite. I think you have to put this motion forward.
Right.
And a no vote.
And that would give them. Gives us, gives the town a positive recommendation towards the project. Just to clarify, because it's a little, it's kind of like the question a couple of years ago.
No is yes.
It's a little.
No is yes.
All right. Is there any discussion on the motion? The motion coming out of the committee is, where it doesn't need a second, it's coming out of the committee, is to reject the motion to deny. Okay? Do you have that? So.
We vote yes, we reject the motion to deny.
You vote no on the motion. The motion is asking you to reject it.
Yeah, the motion is asking to reject. So, a no vote.
It's not easy.
Okay, I'm going to vote no.
Would be the appropriate thing if you want to support the school. Okay?
I want to support the school.
And if you don't want to support, support the school, say yes on this motion. All right? So, any discussion on it? Hearing none.
Oh, yeah. So, I think if what we heard, what I understood correct, if I understood correctly from what the folks at Northeast told us today, this will be most likely on the ballot. So, the citizens will ultimately have the decision-making power. No matter how we vote on this, unless two communities change their mind. That's how I understood this.
That's exactly what it is. That's why I asked that question.
Right.
And pull, had to pull out the, you know.
Right, okay. And I think that's a good thing, but at the same time, I think our vote is important as a, as a vote of confidence one way or another.
Yes.
Just a point of clarification on the citizens have the right, the citizens in plurality.
All 14 communities.
A community could vote no. However, if the, you know, if there's 40,000 people vote of 20,001 in the 12 communities vote yes, it's yes for everyone.
For everybody, even if they voted no.
Correct.
Yes.
But, and so that is anticipated to happen. So.
That's what.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the councilors? Hearing none, let's take a voice vote.
Councilor Aggero?
No.
Council Flacott?
No.
Council DeMarco?
No.
Council Luteri?
No.
Council Honan? Council Farino?
No.
Vice President Christopher?
No.
President Boncory?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, motion does not pass. So, it looks like we are supporting the school. Moving on to second item on the old business is the town council appropriate $750,000 for the MWRA lead line replacement. Do you have that actual motion?
We do, Council President, that the town appropriates the sum of $750,000 to pay cost of replacing lead line service lines, including all costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet that appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow a set amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. And to issue bonds or notes or of the town therefore, that the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or financial assistance agreement with the authority and otherwise to contract with the authority with such respect to buy such loan. And for any grants or aid available for the project or for the financing therefore, the town manager is authorized to accept and expand any grants or aid available for the project or the financing thereof, providing that the amount of the authorized borrowing of the project shall be reduced by the amount of any such grants or aids received that the town manager is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out this project and that any premium received upon the sale of any of these bonds or notes approved by this order less any such premium applied to the repayment and cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this order in accordance with Mass General Arch, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. This came out of committee with positive recommendation.
So, it does not mean a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll take a vote. Please call the roll.
Councilor Aggero?
Yes.
Council Flacott?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Luteri?
Yes.
Council Honan? Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes. Motion carries. Next motion is the town council appropriates $250,000 for Phase 3 sewer assessment study. Jim, you want to read that one?
Sure. That the town appropriates the sum of $250,000 to pay cost of sewer system infiltration and inflow assessment study, including engineering and services and surveys and all other costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow set amount under and pursuant to Mass General Arch, Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 7, or pursuant to any enabling authority. And to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore, and that the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the MWRA and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or financial assistance agreement with the authority and otherwise to contract with the authority with respect to such loan. And for any grants or aid available for the project for the refinancing thereof, that the town manager is authorized to accept and expend any grants or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof therefore, provided that the amount of the authorized borrowing for the project shall be reduced by the amount of any such grants or aids received. That the town manager is authorized to take any other action relative thereto to carry out this project and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this order in accordance with Mass General Arch, Chapter 40, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Again, came out of committee with positive recommendation.
Therefore, it does not need a second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the council? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Please signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Councilor Aggero?
Yes.
Council Flacott?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Luteri?
Yes.
Council Honan? Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes. Okay, the next motion is a motion to adopt the new fees for the Department of DPW. Are you reading that one or are you reading that one? I mean, I have a joint committee.
I'd love to read it, but I don't have it.
Okay, I have.
Do you have further requests? I just don't have the, the motion.
It's a motion.
Well, this is an easy one. I move that town council adopt the new fee schedule for the Department of Public Works as presented and the attached memo or take any other action relative thereto. There are three recommendations. Implement a new fee of $150 for new curb cut in addition to the requirement for cement permit fee. Number two is to add $250 to the wa, current water and sewer permit fees for all new service connections. Therefore, a new residence with a water or sewer installation will cost 400 and the repairing of an existing residential service will remain at 150. A new commercial water sewer, water or sewer service will cost 450 and the repair of an existing commercial service will remain at 200. An increase our residential internment fee to 800 from 650 and for non-resident from 750 to 1,000. And this did come out of committee with positive recommendation.
I just come out of committee with a positive recommendation, does not need a second. Is there any discussion in the council on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the Department of Public Works new fee schedule? Signify by saying yes when your name is called.
Councilor Aggero?
Yes.
Council Flacott?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Luteri?
Yes.
Council Honan? Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes. Motion carries. Next motion is to authorize the council to, the town to accept a grant award by the Mass Department of Conservation, Mass Trails. Is that correct? Okay, and this is for the Greenway expansion. You had that as well, Jim?
Yes.
You want, you have it?
Sure. I just don't know if the text is right in this because it doesn't say trails in either of these motions, correct?
It's the Mass Department of Conserva, Conservation and Recreation. So, they manage Mass Trails.
Okay. So, I move the town council vote to authorize Town of Winter to accept and expand, expand the amount of $87,000 in the form of a grant awarded by the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation to be administered by the Town of Winter's Town Manager Department. The remaining matching funds of $33,900 ought to be paid out directly by the Friends of the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway using a Bar Foundation grant. This grant is for Winter Greenway Extension, Mary Welch Greenway Site Survey plus design or take any other action relative thereto. This did come out of committee with positive recommendation. That last few sentences were very important in us making this decision, which is why it's been on the agenda for a while because there was a matching grant of almost $34,000 for the town, which we were a little reluctant. Now, we don't have to expend any cash on this grant. And what this does is it gives us, it gives us a glimpse into what it could look like. And eventually they'll come back with different renderings we expect of different options and then you get to that point. Mass Trails grant, $87,000, yeah.
Okay.
And this did come out with positive recommendation.
Since it came out with positive recommendation, does it need a second? Is there any discussion in the council on this issue? Hearing none, please answer yes when your name is called.
Councilor Aggero?
Yes.
Council Flacott?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Luteri?
Uh, yes.
Council Honan? Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is that the town council vote to transfer $36,700 from the capital stabilization to the general fund for firing range, firing range air unit replacement.
Yes, the Council President, I move the town council vote to transfer $36,700 from the capital stabilization fund to the general fund for the police fire range air unit replacement or take any other action relative thereto. That did also come out of committee with positive recommendation. It leaves a balance in the capital stabilization fund if this motion is passed of a little over 2.7 million. And it did have positive recommendation.
Having a positive recommendation, does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the council? Hearing none. All those indicate your vote when your name is called.
Councilor Aggero?
Yes.
Council Flacott?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Luteri?
Uh, yes.
Council Honan? Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Council President? There is one more that I'm not sure if it was on there or not. It's old business. It's for, we have two special elections coming up.
Yes.
And we did have a motion, this was discussed previously and we brought it up again tonight and did come back with a positive recommendation that the town council vote to transfer $35,000 from free cash reserve to the town clerk, account number 0116151-512005 to fund the cost associated with the December 14th, 2021 primary and January 11th, 2022 special election or take any other action relative thereto. There are going to be, you know, there will be some small reimbursement to this. But this is the cost of the town for the special elections and we need to make sure that that money is accounted for before the special election happens.
Okay, a motion has been made to appropriate funding of $35,000 for the next two special elections.
Second. I think it's out of committee. Yeah, Robbie?
Sorry, Jim, you said free cash. I know I think that motion might say free cash, but it's actually out of the town council reserve at this moment. And then we can replenish that reserve with free cash once it's certified.
Okay, free cash is.
I think if you look, if you look at the account numbers on that motion.
It is a free, it is a reserve account number. So, I'm going to just amend the motion that the town council vote to transfer $35,000 from town council reserve to the town clerk account to fund the cost associated with the December 14th, 2021 primary and January 11th, 2022 special election or take any other cash. Because if you look at the bottom of the motion, it actually has the funding source as the town council reserve and it's just the wording was off. Must be the town council clerk's problem.
It's been amended.
The new council clerk.
Is there a second? Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to raise $35,000 for the council reserve to the special elections. Is there any discussion on it? Hearing no discussion on it, please indicate your vote when your name is called.
Councilor Aggero?
Yes.
Council Flacott?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Luteri?
Yes.
Council Honan? Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes. Now, I see appointments under old business, but we're going to do that under new business.
I wasn't sure because we, you already did the tree committee.
Yeah, but, no, we'll do it under new business. Okay, moving on to old business. I mean, new business, I'm sorry. First thing is the National Grid Pleasant Street pole and wire locations. This is what we had the public hearing on. I am going to send this to the public safety committee.
Great meeting.
Okay, public safety committee. Okay. The next thing is to town council authorize Deputy Assessor Stephen Roach to sign any and all documents in our name to change the certification and value setting taxes in the tax classification process. This is not a money issue at all. This is not a money issue at all. This is something I think we don't even have to send to committee. I think we just need authorization by the councilors to give him authorization to do this. So, you know, I would entertain this motion.
I'll make a motion, council president.
The motion has been made by Council Luteri and seconded by Council DeMarco. And the motion is to authorize Stephen Roach to sign any and all documents in our name related to certification of value setting the tax rate as well as the tax classification process in the event we are absent or not meeting as a group. So I'll sign that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, I don't think we need a roll call for that. Everybody could just sign this letter and it'll be done. Okay. All right, the next issue is town council vote to authorize the Town of Winter to accept 449,825 dollars in the form of a grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Bureau of Community Health Provocation. And I'm going to send this motion to the Finance Committee. For the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. The next motion that we have is a motion. All right. Okay, the next motion is that town council appropriate $50,000 from the sale of a land of town property fund to a special article for the purpose of real estate consulting service related to the sale of the old middle school property.
Council President? Motion sent to Finance.
I would actually like to table that and use my privilege and put that off two weeks.
Okay. Huh? No, I was, I was sending it to committee. I mean, we're not taking it up. It's on under new business, so I, I am going to send that to the Finance Committee. All right. Under new business, I have two appointments out past the gavel. And I would like to appoint Chris Aiello, who had filled an application out for the tree committee to replace Chris Zeig, who we just lost, so.
Okay, Chris Aiello's name has been nominated. Is any discussion on the nomination? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Flockhart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Luteri.
Yes.
Council Honan. Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the next one, I would like to appoint Kathy Driscoll to the council on agent. Kathy Dixon had recommended her.
Kathy Driscoll's name has been put into nomination. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow.
Yes.
Council Flockhart.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Luteri.
Yes.
Council Honan. Council Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and we will now open public comment again. Anyone in the audience for public comment? Anyone?
Just a question, I guess. Do you actually have to take a vote on the funding for the vote? Or can you just not do anything?
So if we don't do anything in 60 days, it continues as a positive vote for the vote.
Okay, you do not.
By not rejecting it, it becomes a positive vote after 60 days.
I hope it's going to be that easy when you vote on a public safety vote.
Different rules.
All right, I see two hands up on Zoom. And who are they? I can't, Diane Vane's, okay.
Hey, everyone. Sorry, I had to duck out. I was waiting to tell the park. And two hours later, it was put off, so. That said, I learned a lot, so I'm glad I came tonight. And so this is actually going to probably sound a lot like the town manager's report. But I will say, a great, great decision on the vocational school. I do feel like the tides have sort of turned and these are now super lucrative and very scarce jobs. So good, good, good decision there. Chris, Peter, the ordinance committee, don't know what animals you were talking about, so probably would have loved a little clarity there. But also, no word on the tree ordinance. I think, I think that was submitted in Zoom, if I'm not mistaken, or thereabouts. So would love to hear an update on that very, very soon. With respect to, to the park, just because it's top of mind, I do feel like, just to sense any expenditures on consulting, it's, it's very premature. And I do feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't say the spike claims. So the contrary, the existing sort of age plans are vague. And I don't, I don't feel they reflect a collaborative effort contributed to by current residents. Example, example, I would, I would love a, I would love a crosswalk light on the, on Hollywood Street. My kids cross there all the time. I don't know even if that's included. So, you know, for what it's worth, I'm interested to understand if that's included in what we're talking about. And with respect to Chris, very appreciated that Frank spoke on his behalf tonight. And there will be a memorial service here in Winter. His, his funeral will be held in Pennsylvania where his family resides. But they do know that we were a big part of his life and he loved us deaths as much as we love him. And they will, they will certainly be honoring him here. So more details to come on that. That said, thanks.
Thank you, Diane. I see Jennifer. I can't read the last name.
Yep, Jennifer.
Jennifer Powell. Hi, Jennifer.
Hello.
How are you?
Just to, I'm, I'm good, thank you. Just a real quick clarification, the musical this weekend is SpongeBob SquarePants musical.
SpongeBob.
And the tickets are available online now.
Okay, and there are three shows, two on the 13th and one on the 14th, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two o'clock Saturday, seven o'clock Saturday, two o'clock Sunday.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
All right, thank you.
SpongeBob SquarePants, don't forget that.
My niece is in it.
Okay, is there, I thought I saw a third hand. I saw Wendy Page, is she still there?
Wendy had her hand up and she put it down.
Okay, so that's it? All right, anyone else in the audience? Hearing none, we will end public comment. And before public comment, any public relations? I have just two.